I see it's eight thirty, so I think everybody's here, so let's make the start. Very warm welcome to the members of the Audit and Risk Committee, other councillors and staff to the September meeting of the Audit and Risk Committee. Just before we head off into the agenda, can I just give notice that the chairman is using his prerogative today and I'm going to change the order of the agenda just slightly. And I thought the Audit and Risk Committee would benefit hearing from the auditors before we were asked to consider the annual report and financial statements. So with your blessing, I propose to do Agenda Item six point three before we then do six point two. And I'll make a note that in future September meetings, we get that order right. I think, as I say, it's worthwhile that we hear from the auditors before we consider the annual report. But other than that, looks a straightforward sort of meeting. We have no apologies. Are there any apologies that we are unaware of or apologies for early departure? There being none, so thank you for that. Public participation, we have had no requests for public participation. Conflicts of interest, always important. Are there any conflicts of interest that need to be declared for today's agenda? Silence, there's being none. And there have been no items of extraordinary business, so seeing these need to be given prior notice, I'm sure there is none then on the agenda. So very quickly to Agenda Item number five, confirmation of the minutes of the Audit and Risk Committee on the seventeenth of June. They are in our meeting paper pack. Are there any alterations, any changes to those minutes? There appears to be none, so I will move that those minutes of the meeting of the Audit and Risk Committee on the seventeenth of June be taken as the true and complete record of that meeting. Do I have a second, please? Thank you, Mayor, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favour, please say aye. Contrary carried. Right, Agenda Item six point one, our health and safety report. We're being asked to receive this report, so I will move in that direction. Seconded, councillor Turin, thank you, it's been moved and seconded. I'll open it for discussion now. And as a normal practice, I would hand to Gerry and/or Angela for sort of comments on this quarter's report. Thank you, Gerry.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, quite a busy quarter, actually, a lot of activity happening in the health and safety space. I'm going to take the report as read, there's just a couple of comments I would make, some enhancements that we've made, an upgrade to our VHF radio system, so that we now share a common platform across the organisation between our works depot and our emergency management facility. So that's both improved our capability in terms of responding to emergencies with field staff and also given us a lot more confidence for lone workers and people out in the field that they can contact us should they get into difficulties. So that's one thing I think worthy of note. And the other is we've upgraded our EAP provider, we've gone to two new providers, Benestar and Manawa Aura, which will provide a Maori perspective. Benestar is assessed as a better provider, it's got more people in the area for our staff to see if they need to, and it also provides some additional support to managers seeking assistance in the, in a situation where they've got, for example, staff under stress or suffering from problems. So, yeah, thank you.
Any comments, questions, discussions? Councillor Duncan.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just a question on Enviro Waste for May. Now that's page fifteen, item eight. A skip in a general rubbish from interwaste was dumped on the tipface pad and amongst the rubbish were medical syringes. As I see that Interwaste apologised for it, but do they clean it up or how do we go about cleaning that up?
I'm actually not sure what the answer to that is, I don't know. Ange, do you have any additional information?
That up themselves, so, sorry, is it on? Okay, the Enviro Waste cleaned that up themselves and, yeah, to resolve that, yeah, there's a bit, I think they had a temp working and the temp picked up the wrong bin and took it to the tipface by mistake.
Another one?
Sorry, it's just Wellington Water's commentary highlighted pertinent information and there were injuries totaling seven for the quarter, but only one of those injuries has been explained, were the other six not pertinent.
Councillor Leggett.
Under contractor management with the stats, I just wonder, because we have, I mean, this may be a time thing, we just have with our other stats, trend information, trend data, whether it's possible to have trend data over time, so that it's all very well to have three quarters or whatever, but it doesn't really give us any idea of trends. So whether they've got historical trend data, it'd be good to see what we do replicated by the contractors.
Yeah, we'll take a look into that, see what we can come up with. Certainly the information that we're now starting to gather each quarter will allow us to build a history ourselves as well.
Councillor Turin.
Thanks, Mr Chair, I had a question and then a comment, both in relation to page thirteen. So it's six point oh on risk management, identifies during the quarter a risk was identified regarding front counter safety at council customer facing sites. In relation to that risk, what's the nature of that risk and is that all council sites with front counters or just some sites?
So that risk was identified, we had a member of the public come in to our front counter down in the admin building, and that presented a bit of a risk to staff in that we identified they couldn't easily, you know, shut doors or get to a safe space, so we've engaged with an external contractor to get a new, fresh set of eyes to come in and actually check all of our front counters and provide feedback on what we can do to improve it.
Cool, thanks. And in relation to that, I think it said that the results of the audit will be included in the next quarter's report. If it's a safety issue, I assume we'll be able to be actions faster than that.
Correct, yes, yeah.
Cool. The other comment I had, just I'm still on page thirteen, relation to seven point two, health and safety training and wellness initiatives, it would just be useful to have some context or commentary around this potentially, and that when I read through and I see the numbers of training, it doesn't mean a lot to me without any context. So, yeah, I guess maybe just a comment on there around whether or not eleven fire extinguisher trainings is significant or in line with what we'd expect, something like that, and that would be useful. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I make an observation just while we are thinking about other questions? It was somewhat sort of concerning but not surprising, I suppose, that there was two instances mentioned in the report of people talking on the telephone while driving. My observation on the public roads, this is an increasing problem, and I would have thought something we should keep an eye on. I would imagine if you're driving a huge truck and talking on the phone, that's incredibly Councillor Ford.
Thank you, Chair, that was along the lines of the questioning I was going to ask. So April-June, that commentary for Enviro Waste, where there are near misses with people on the phones, are we reliant on, is that someone dobbing in their fellow worker or that?
Yeah, so all the instances with someone talking on the phone were contractors on the Enviro Waste site. So in that case, the Enviro Waste staff are identifying and seeing the contractor on the phone and reporting that. We've asked Enviro Waste to go back to all the contractors who attend the site to reiterate the rules. They do have the ability to exclude certain drivers from actually being able to go to the site if they start to see a pattern of them not following rules.
It could be higher than that number.
I see there's no further discussion or question. Thank you, Gerry, and thank you, Angela, for this report. So it's been moved and seconded that we received this report. All those in favour, please say aye. Contrary carried. Thank you very much. As mentioned earlier, we'll move now to Agenda Item six point three, ahead of our consideration of the annual report. And ask Grant and Casey, welcome to you both to this meeting. And just before I ask you to address your report, Grant, which I'll move in a moment, the committee may wish to know that this is Grant's last meeting. Oh, I think it's your last meeting, Grant, but certainly, yes, certainly as our approved daughter today, I understand your six years is up, so we may see you at one more meeting, might we? So, well, just in case we don't, let's just acknowledge that this is your last report on the annual audit anyway, so, yeah. So we've been asked to consider the report and our papers from Ernst &amp; Young, I'm happy to move that be received. Do I have a second, though? Thank you, Mayor. So, Grant, can I ask you and/or Casey to address the highlights, take your report as read, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to touch on a couple of issues. We will take the close report as read. In terms of the status of the audit, we are basically complete, we have a few bits and pieces that we are currently tidying up, but we're basically there. In terms of the financial statements, again, there are some tweaks to the financial statements compared to the set that you see in this document, and that's as a result of us performing our procedures over the last week or so and tidying up the last bits and pieces. Probably the main change that you will see, which there is a separate management paper that has been distributed, is around a late adjustment to do with roading, and that's to do with some vested assets that were omitted. So you see that coming through the P and L as a separate $5.9 million increase, so there is a separate paper about that here. In terms of the areas of audit focus, there's probably three areas I just quickly wanted to touch on. The first one is on infrastructure assets. So the big thing there for us this year was around the roading assets were revalued in December, so we've spent some time looking at that valuation, making sure the data integrity is appropriate, we've looked at the methodology and all the key assumptions as part of that work. A couple of things to note there, the first one being that, and you'll see this in the close report in our appendix in the unadjusted audit differences, we noted a $3.7 million of vested assets that had been double counted within the valuation, so in the balance sheet twice. So in order to take that out, that needs to come off the balance sheet. The second thing I wanted to The second thing I wanted to note there is, and this is something that we identified subsequent to the release of our close report, was that there were some assets in the valuation that had no ownership data attached. So the valuer ignored those assets for valuation purposes. So we raised that with management, management went away and did some analysis. Based on their analysis, which we are happy with, the maximum error that that could possibly be is 1.8 million. So that's a very, very high level estimate. We're not proposing any adjustment in relation to that, as there's some work that needs to be done by the transport team to actually figure out what that exact number is. So that will be in our report to management. The only other item, which we also issued subsequent to the release of our close report, is that 223K of road invested assets had been included, which weren't under the control of council. So that's also included in our unadjusted audit difference schedule. The second thing I quickly just wanted to touch on is around interpretation around the capitalisation of cloud computing costs, which is relevant to the council at the moment, as you know, with DataScape project ongoing. So the council has approximately 2.6 million of capitalized costs in relation to that project sitting on the balance sheet. What this new accounting interpretation does is it makes it a lot harder to capitalize costs in relation to configuration and customisation. So what we've asked management to do is to do some analysis over the coming year to actually see whether they've got that capitalisation or expenditure split appropriate. And there is a transitionary phase that the standards allow, that if there are costs relating to thirty June twenty one that need to be pulled off the balance sheet, that can be flowed through opening equity in June twenty two. So that's something that's ongoing. The last thing I wanted to touch on is just the statement of service performance. So we have basically completed all of our work on the statement of service performance. There are some changes to the document as a result of that work over the past week, which will result in differences to what you see in the draft, in the papers. And probably the big thing for us this year and was an issue last year was around the water measures and our ability to rely on the data that comes from Wellington Water. So we've obviously been in contact with Audit New Zealand in terms of getting comfort on those measures. There are some additional measures that have been added in as a result of some conversations we've had with the Office of the Auditor General over the past week and a half. So we're just looking to close those last few bits and pieces out. And it's really around where we can't rely on the data. There'll be footnotes throughout the document saying that those results are unaudited. So we just need to pin down exactly which ones will be unaudited, where we can't rely, and that will have an impact on the way our audit report will look. But that's all I really wanted to touch on. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry, through you, Chair, so the consequence of the last discussion is it's highly likely that our report will be qualified this year to put you in the camp with all of the other councils that are reliant on Wellington Water's data. Contrasting that to last year, you might rightly challenge what's different, as I have done with the auditors general. I guess what's different is we now know with certainty the results of the FY twenty audits for those other councils. Whereas last year, Porirua, as we usually are, was ahead of your peer councils and your report was issued at a time where we could legitimately say we did not know the conclusions. This year, we do know the conclusions. And we also know the indication from the Wellington Water appointed auditor to the Wellington Water Board in the last couple of months signalling strongly that they will be qualified again this year. So I don't think we can legitimately rely on being ahead of the pack in those audit conclusions not being formalised because we know what they're going to result in. That was all I wanted to add.
Thank you, Casey and Grant. Questions and discussions? Graham?
Does that mean you're going to change the emphasis of matter and actually qualify the accounts or?
Correct, Graham, so.
The report we've got has got an emphasis of matter, drawing people's attention to that. But the one we will issue will be different because it will be an adverse opinion or?
It will be an accept four, yep. If you want it, I could repeat my diagnosis of the relevant auditing standards. I don't know how you get to an accept four, but that seems to be the consistent approach.
So we're doing exactly what the other?
Exactly what the other councils will do. And Wendy did challenge me going into that session to just make sure that if we were going to move, that we were convinced that we were wrong and it wasn't all the other auditors that were wrong. And it's fair to say we held our own, Casey, in that the other auditors went away reflecting positively on some of the performance measures Porirua have, which has allowed us to get more confident that are not replicated across your fellow councils. And that's just been a result of the maturing out of your performance framework through your long-term planning processes. And it's likely that those other councils are currently talking to Wellington Water, seeing if they can, although they're not performance measures that they've set targets for, it's likely those performance measures will be reported on in their annual reports. So, yeah, looking for a silver lining, your good work has led to your peer councils lifting their own performance framework standards.
I have another question, Mr Chair.
Sure, Graham.
In relation to vested assets, you point out in your report that there was a adjustment made for something which happened last year but made this year, the 3.7 million. Yep. And then we've had an adjustment since the report came out of over five million for vested assets as well. I just wondered if we were, if there's some issue with vested assets. And are we now comfortable that we've picked up all the changes in vested assets that we think we should have, as far as we know?
Well, we're confident, but probably for the management team to answer that one, Graham.
I'll open it to the management team.
Vested assets by their nature and how we come across them to developers is a complex and takes a lot of judgment. So we work through those and through this process, we've got more robust processes. But as we take on more vested assets, we will need to continue to look at our processes to improve them. But they are the ones that come from developers. The issue with the 5.9 is that the roads had been valued, it was the land under the road. So again, that's something we will put in. So when the valuation got done, they valued the roads. So we now got a learning from this that we will put into our processes. But by their nature, vested assets are a complex beast.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor?
Thank you. Are these water issues sector wide or is it just us that the auditors are?
They're definitely region wide, you wish it. And there's, what I would say is, to be fair to Wellington Water, there has been really good progress in the twelve months since we last spoke on these issues. However, they haven't been able to have the updated systems and processes across the whole twelve month reporting period. And so there's always going to be a lag in terms of them getting these things in place and then another twelve months for them to be able to be in place for the whole reporting cycle and tested for it to have an opinion impact from our point of view. So as the water reform process continues though, they're learning lots about just how much people don't understand about the assets that are under the ground. And that's not a Wellington alone issue, that's national.
So is that why those auditors are being so picky? It seems to me that they are concentrating on them when we are all on the same issue. But Wellington Water's audit is just being, I probably shouldn't say anything else.
Yeah, maybe over a cup of tea, yeah.
Can I ask a question? How many performance measures are involved here and are they all significant? And also, what are Wellington Water doing to get out of this situation? Are we likely to see this again next year or is some work being done to rectify this issue?
Yeah, Warren, I would, it's a judgement whether it'll be there next year. I would highly suspect not, because Wellington Water have done a lot of work. And there has been some education of all of the auditors, us included, about alternative ways using GPS tracking on vehicles and the like that have been able to give some assurance around measures. So I'd highly unlikely it'll be there next year. But it's highly, you know, it could be a completely different sector next year, so. And not all of the measures, we're only interested in the ones we've identified as being significant. And as a result of our ongoing discussions with the auditors general, we have two, three additional measures that have been re-characterised. Of those, one, we have assurance from Wellington Water's auditor that the number Porirua's reporting is appropriate. That's in terms of the dry weather overflows. And so we're down to two measures. And really, that was the point, which is a judgement. But, you know, I'm saying, my initial view was, well, if there are two measures we can't get confident on, we opine at a statement of service performance level, we don't comment on individual components of that. To my mind, the judgement of the auditor is, is there sufficient information there for a reader to form a view on aggregate level council performance? And that's where I probably have a slightly different view than the other appointed auditors. My view is, despite these measures being unreliable, I think there's enough in there for Porirua community members to form a view on aggregate level council performance. But, you know, we're being asked to be consistent, which we will be.
Grant, distilling all that, so your except for qualification wording will just refer to two performance measures?
We're still working through that.
Yeah, we're drafting that with the OIG technical team at the moment, Warren. So it's, if, and I think we have provided the Hut City report from last year is likely to be the model from which that team will draft the wording.
Can I please ask that, once that wording is finalised and issued to the council, whether that's then distributed around to the Audit Risk Committee members ahead of the consideration at council? Thank you, Wendy, you were wanting to make a?
Just to clarify, I understand that one of those measures is a water loss measure. And that will trail forward for some time. That is not something we would be able to fix between now and next year's audit. So that depends on metres, we haven't costed that into our programme. So if that's one of the performance measures, that will remain for some time, I suggest.
And you're right, Wellington Water have historically given a regional metric at nineteen percent, I think has historically been the level. They've now, this year, for the first time been able to give you a Porirua specific measure. But the one standard deviation around what they're able to report to you was massive. And so they can give you a specific measure, but it's probably less reliable than even the regional one. Because you've only got four metres, I think, is the?
Councillor Leggett?
I understand the conversation around this, I just wanted to ask the high level question. Is there anything else, or is there anything else that you haven't mentioned that we should be concerned about going forward?
No, I don't think so. I mean, no, there's nothing that kind of we thought should we or should we not talk to council about?
No further questions or discussions. Thank you once again, Grant and Casey, for your report and your work this year on the council's annual report and financial statements. So it's been moved and seconded that we receive EY's report. All those in favour, please say aye. Contrary, carried. Right, now it's appropriate for us to move to agenda item six point two. And there's quite a list of things that we've been asked to look at here. One is to receive the report, note the comments of the external auditors, agree that the appropriate information or approach has been taken in respect to the process to produce the annual report, agree to the accounting treatments proposed, note the overview of the financial and non-financial results and endorse the adoption of the annual report and the summary annual report. So I have pleasure in moving in that direction. Seconded, councillor Duncan, thank you. The annual report, covering a number of pages, is open for discussion. Councillor Duncan?
Yes, my question relates to page forty four, other expenses. There, in the last line of page forty four, there are other operating expenses, eleven million as compared to seven million last year. Was there some specific item that caused this forty percent increase in expenditure?
Who can address that or?
Graham, what's the actual page number of the annual report itself? Oh, page forty four.
Sorry, the page?
It's page forty four. It's the?
Or expenses?
It's the forty three eight eight O versus the thirty seven five one nine. And the last figure is other operating expenses. Is eleven point six versus seven point six.
Yeah, I believe it's probably to do with the provision for View Road for last year. We brought that through and we reversed some of the provision.
Ken, another one, councillor Duncan?
Yeah, it's page forty seven, item fourteen, and in the CCO Wellington Water. The item doesn't list Southwire Rapids District Council, does that change the shareholding in there at all?
That would be something I would need to come back on.
Can I just ask a question while we may need to sort of come back on that particular one? I'm on page fifty five and looking at the note on the landfill aftercare provision. And while I understand how discounted cash flows work and you have a huge impact on the movement in the interest rate there, which was only one percent. You know, it's somewhat counterintuitive to see that provision go down by such a large amount. And I just asked, look at that sort of wording. And, you know, if the pundits are correct and the interest rates continue to rise, we could see in the next year or two that that provision comes down to sort of next to nothing. And, you know, the thing is, is the landfill is there until, I think, twenty fifty three before any aftercare comes in. So, you know, that becomes a really small, so a small or could become a very small figure, which, you know, I would think to many readers is sort of counterintuitive because the costs of restoring these landfills tend to be going up quite dramatically with sort of new requirements. So, but perhaps just, what I'm saying is perhaps just have a look at the wording underneath that and connect it also with the accounting policy for that provision is on page thirty nine. So, you know, I think it would be helpful at that page fifty five note to make the connection back to page thirty nine.
And so, Warren, would you be suggesting disclosure of the nominal dollar figure as well to give a broad order of magnitude?
Yeah, I think certainly with me reading it, that would have been very helpful, yeah. Presumably, that's the best estimate of the cost that will be incurred starting in twenty fifty three, Grant. Presumably, that's the best estimate of the cost that will be incurred starting in twenty fifty-three, Grant, is what you're referring to.
Yeah.
Councillor Turin.
Um, thanks, Mr Chair. Um, so one of the recommendations is agreeing to the accounting treatments proposed for the annual reports, recommendation four. So wondering if we could have someone just speak to that specifically?
It will be me, I just, um, need to get to that page. So, and within the, um, annual report. Uh, and. My diligence work.
Can, can I help out? Generally, councillor, that refers to are there any changes to accounting policies? You know, uh, within these financial statements, uh, you know, any of the accounting treatments different than what the council, uh, has adopted in the past? Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I think really that's what that point for the accounting treatments is referring to. And, uh, so I think if we, if we had an answer to the question, has there been any significant changes to the accounting policies or treatments this year would be helpful.
So, um, page thirty-two outlines a statement of accounting policies and there's been, um, and you'll see the significant accounting policies, there's been no changes, um, this year. So that's how, what that's endorsing is, um, from page thirty-two, um, through the notes to the financial statement, statement of accounting policies and key policies. So I just couldn't find that page.
Any other questions, discussions? This is a big document, it's an important document, once a year, it's a public document. It does look good, it looks very similar to last year. Um, I can tell you, I went through it thoroughly, uh, and, uh, it's a very good job's been done. So, uh, if there's no further questions or discussions, nothing further from chief executive or CFO, uh, on, on this, uh, I'm happy to put the motion, it's been moved and seconded. Um, and with all of those six points that we're asked to deal with, uh, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Thank you for the efforts on, on that. Okay, agenda item six point four, uh, standard agenda item on our quarterly meetings, the Treasury. Uh, we've been asked to, uh, receive, uh, this report, so I'm happy to move in that direction. It's been seconded by councillor Ford, thank you. Uh, thank you, Zach, as is normal, can you just briefly, uh, introduce the paper, uh, before we open it up for discussion?
Thank you, through you, Chair. So this is the quarterly update for thirtieth of June, two thousand twenty-one. The information has now been corrected to be from the operative long-term plan, being the long-term plan twenty twenty-one fifty-one. Um, the new addition to the Treasury report, as you said, is a transaction log, which, uh, presents any significant, uh, actions during the quarterly period we are reporting on. Um, so it, it looks to detail and create that log historically over time, so we can see what was undertaken. Um, as at the thirtieth of June, two thousand twenty-one, we are fully compliant with the investment and liability management policy. Um, as we discussed this time, we are refining the presentation. And next time this comes to council, we will be in a PowerPoint presentation or slide pack, uh, directly from P W C. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions or discussions on the Treasury report? There be, there being none, uh, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Thank you, six point five, the risk and insurance, uh, quarterly report. Um, and again, we've been asked to, uh, receive this report for information and I'm again happy to move in that direction, it's been seconded by the mayor, thank you. Um, Joe, and sorry, Alison, as, uh, I'm sure we'll sort of talk to this before we open it up for discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Um, good progress against the plan. The main pieces of work that were completed in the last quarter were the annual sensitive expenditure review, which I'll talk to in the next agenda item. Um, completed a, our first health and safety site audit up at the animal control, um, space, which was good. We had some good learnings out of that. And we've also made some pretty good progress on information management and getting sort of some policy and strategy, um, documents approved. And we'll start, um, Joe will be leading a project in that space. And so that's good, that closes off, um, some recommendations that have been hanging around for a while, sort of internal and external recommendations. And we've just got a couple of outstanding audit issues that we're still working through around journals and, um, an end-of-life operating system. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Joe, I think this is the smallest number, so, Joe, Alison, thank you. I've got eyes going both directions, apologies, Alison. Alison, thank you, I think this is the smallest number of outstanding items we've, uh, had for some time and, uh, and, and the, and the report indicates that those, those two should be, uh, fixed up with the introduction of DataScape, is that right? All right, any other comments and discussions? Thank you, Alison. So it's been moved and seconded, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Right, uh, the review of sensitive expenditure. Uh, we've been asked again to receive the report for information and agree the management actions. Uh, I'm happy to move in that direction, do I have a second, please? Seconded, councillor Duncan, thank you. Uh, Alison, thank you for this, uh, important piece of work, uh, and your report. Uh, again, brief introduction before we open that up for, uh, discussion.
Thank you, Chair. Um, it was a pretty straightforward audit this year, I've made three recommendations. Rated it as effective overall, um, those recommendations, although two low and one moderate, they're pretty straightforward to correct, um, mobile device monitoring, purchase card coding. They, um, have been sort of progressed and then the vehicle use policy. I just sort of keep an eye on that going forward with some organisational changes, um, which will change some of the responsibilities for vehicle use. And so I'll monitor that going forward, um, but again, happy to take any questions.
Councillor Turin.
Yes, a very quick question in relation to the mobile device usage, just on page one hundred and thirty-six, where it says that high data usage is considered to be anything over ten megabytes a month. Is that supposed to be gigabytes?
I can see Chanel nodding at me, so.
I, I thought, thought that would be the case.
Councillor Leggett.
Um, regarding sensitive, uh, expenditure, uh, in relation to the emergency accommodation expend, uh, um, expenses, can you just explain that a little bit more about who didn't pay what and who did and all the rest of it?
So in, in emergen, so it doesn't have to be a declared emergency, but if we're responding to anything, so this was the Plymouth and floods last year, there were, um, some residents that we put in emergency housing. And so under the civil defence, um, you know, sort of legal descriptions of expenses you can claim, you can claim back any expenses that a council incurs for emergency accommodation. So we just haven't done that at the time and we should have, and so we've, um, claimed those back.
So, so who's, where's the three and a half thousand recovered from, sorry, Chair?
From the National Emergency Management Office.
Gotcha, right, that just wasn't clear, I wasn't sure whether it was recovered from the people with the emergency accommodation or whatever.
Sorry, I should have made that a bit clearer, yeah.
Alison, can I ask, when I was looking at the Ernst and Young, uh, report, they had an issue that came forward from last year's work that they did. Uh, it was a purchase card issue, uh, I, if my memory serves me right, it was some cost in relation to an eye test. Uh, has that been followed up in this audit? Was that a one-off issue or is there a systemic issue there?
Not at all, um, Chair, and I'm pretty confident that if that was the only finding, then we're in a good place and that supports my effective rating. It was a thirty-dollar expense, so a one-off for an eye exam, which is perfectly acceptable, but it should have gone through the payroll system for reimbursement rather than on the P card, so not a major issue.
Thank you, good to hear, that's closed out. Councillor Ford.
Chanel, do you want to talk to that one at all, senior online? We've got our chief information officer online.
Apologies, the microphone was muted, so I was unable to hear the question.
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I, I think.
Okay, so I'll ask the question then, sorry.
Um, sorry Chanel, it was a question about.
The, um, so it was just around the mobile device, um, and because you were talking about a lot of usage, downloaded stuff, um, council's responsibility around the content of that downloaded data were, um, yeah, so how, how do we monitor it? What is the risk to council?
Chanel, are you going to do that? Welcome to your first Audit and Risk Committee, uh, meeting, so, thank you.
Councillor Ford is referring to content as opposed to volume, um, Chanel. Are, are you, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, unfortunately, we can't, um, monitor or see what content has been downloaded. Um, as a part of sort of the, the next one of the items I'll be talking about, we are looking to implement sort of a mobile device management system. So we will be able to sort of look at that content and manage that going forward.
Yes, please, Wendy.
Um, so while our monitoring techniques are not great, we have had circumstances in the past where we have, um, undertaken disciplinary action because it's come to our attention through other ways. So we do have a zero tolerance for, um, um, content that, um, unacceptable content, yeah, so.
And, and we also have some really clear policies around that and that filters through into our code of conduct, so we can take action if we know about it.
All right, I'm not seeing any further questions or discussions, thank you for that. It's been moved and seconded that we receive this report. All those in favour, please say aye. Contrary, carried. Agenda item six point seven, uh, the DataScape update. Uh, again, we've been asked to receive this report for information, so I have pleasure in moving in that direction. Do I have a second, please? Graham Mitchell, thank you very much, Graham. It's been moved and seconded, so we'll open it for discussion. Um, Joe or Chanel, Jo to start with, so, thank you.
So I can actually give a, so this was still put as at the thirty-first of August. Um, I can give you an update of where we're sitting at today because we are getting very close to the go-live date. Um, so, um, the project is in a really good position. Um, to be honest, lockdown was, um, most probably the worst of time for us. So we are, um, slightly behind on our training, um, because of our need to do one-on-one training and our user acceptance testing in relation to customer and, um, so the digital front counter and the customer, um, the C O M. We are expecting that we will be going live in October, we're just working what the actual date is. Um, in this report, it was saying the fourth of October. We've worked back, um, it will be in the first, um, half of October. Um, there's some making certain that we complete off the user acceptance testing, uh, train, uh, user acceptance testing and the customer and, um, the digital front counter. And to assure that we, uh, close off thirty September within, um, tech one. So we opened, um, the new ledger, we opened DataScape for the October month. So it will be maybe a week, um, we're just in the final throes of doing that. Um, we do have a quality assurance process and that before we go live, um, we actually have to, um, tick off a number of factors. Um, at the moment, there's nothing to, that is saying that we would not be going live before we do the first rates invoicing, before we do the rates invoicing in October.
Councillor Turin.
Uh, thanks, Mr Chair, um, just in relation to the status dashboards, there's a lot of orange there. Um, but obviously that's shifted from previously there being lots of reds. So even though we aren't yet fully tracking to plan on everything, are we confident that we are moving in the right direction fast enough?
We are confident we're moving in the right direction, um, not at the speed we would of, um, but that was the impact of the three weeks, um, that we had to work remotely for.
Joe or Chanel, can I ask, uh, right at the bottom of the page, there's a, uh, issue there. It says quality is a concern, so there is a focus on resolving defects to meet, uh, users testing, uh, exit criteria. What, what does that refer to and what does that mean? It seemed to be a group of words that, uh, were, were out of context.
Okay, so what we have is we have, um, what we call a defect, which is a P one, which is, um, the system doesn't work. Um, and at the moment, we still have, um, a, we're just testing a couple in the customer space around the integration. Um, we expect those will be resolved, um, with the next release, so the release we get on Tuesday, so that's timetable for those. A P two means, um, is a performance issue, we've got a couple of those. Again, that's coming in the next release on Tuesday, we're just testing. We then go and then P threes, um, which is the next one, which is actually a workaround. Our focus is on the, um, P ones and the P twos in the next release. Um, and at that time, once we get the release next Tuesday, uh, we then work through Wednesday, Thursday, and Thursday's our key date on the customer and the digital front counter where all those key, those, um, defects we expect to be, um, resolved. But if they're not resolved, that's a decision point for us whether we go live or not. And we have made the decision that we will be going live. We won't just go live with finance, we need to go live with customer as well, so our staff, um, aren't split across systems.
Sorry, Joe, I have one other question. And I, I put myself in the camp of a very interested outsider and I didn't really understand the contractual arrangements are heading towards conclusion, right? Contractual arrangements in relation to what with, uh, with, uh, Datacom? And if, if that's the case, are we not a bit late in this process?
Um, because this is a strategic partnership, um, and one of the key pieces of work was the schedule for regulatory and then the liabilities in relation to the schedule for regulatory. Um, we have now got the schedule for regulatory, we're now working through the liability if, um, Datacom does not deliver against the agreed schedule. And that's, um, what that, um, statement there was in relation to.
It's been a vexed issue, I mean, this has been a vexed, uh, negotiation.
Um, yeah, it's difficult to do a contract for a strategic partnership.
Thank you for that, um, I'll, uh, agree with what councillor Turin said, we're seeing really good progress here. We were seeing a lot of red on this page, uh, earlier this year, hate last year, and it's really good to see a splattering of green and, uh, and some, uh, most, most of it sort of yellow or orange. So, uh, congratulations on the team, we certainly look forward and wish you well for the introduction of finance component. All right, being no further discussion or questions, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Contrary, carried. Right, um, we now have one item to consider in, uh, public excluded. Uh, so I will move that we go into public, uh, excluded session and that Ernst and Young be permitted to remain, uh, at this, uh, session. Uh, so I'm happy to move that, do I have a second, please? Seconded by the mayor, thank you. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favour, please say aye. Contrary, carried.